All right, good evening, everybody. This is the City of Clear Lake Shores City Council Regular Meeting, October 3rd, 2022. At 6:30 PM, we have all members of council present and also Justin Pruitt from our representation from Olson and Olson as our city attorney. Item number two, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Texas flag. Well, thanks for everybody coming out and just ask everybody to try to keep the discussions down. I'm just setting a little few ground rules up front, just so everybody can hear each other. I know that stress out the folks if you get up and talk on the microphone, you really have to go ahead and stress, I stress that you speak up so we can hear it. Over the PA system, the speakers are way up here, so the people in the audience have a little bit of a hard time hearing. I think y'all can hear me pretty good, but some of y'all get up there, just go ahead and speak a little bit louder and so we can hear it and plus on the recording, we can hear it. Item number three is reports from councils. Councilman Steve Wirtis.
I have nothing to report at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wirtis. Councilman Rick Fisher.
Nothing to report at this time.
Copy, thank you, Mr. Fisher. Councilwoman Monica LaDai.
Yes, Brittany and I met with the Galveston County Animal Control a couple of weeks ago. We've decided to move our animal control services to them versus the Bay Area Shelter, Buy Your Animals Shelter, I can never say that right, Buy Your Animals Shelter, due to cost.
All right, thank you, Ms. LaDai. Councilman Alex Scanlon.
Cooking turkeys again. I think November 12th is the date. If anybody wants to come out, we welcome anybody. We start at 4:00 AM. Thanks.
Cook some turkeys. All right, thank you, Mr. Scanlon. And Councilman Randy Cronister.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Cronister. Just the mayor reports a couple items. Tomorrow night is National Night Out, so hopefully everybody comes out there. We have a parade starting at Jarboe, and then there's free hot dogs, thanks to Art and Kim Olson and then also Clint Shelton for cooking those up. So we'll be meeting down at Shell Bottom Park, and then all the assets should be out there from Galveston or KIMA, Clear Lake Shores Fire Department and EMS. And also keep Amy in your prayer prayers because she was in a horrible motorcycle accident, and she's over the EMS, so just think about her. Also, check out the new carpet at the city hall. We probably had 12 variations of different colors in there, so it's pretty impressive to be able to see some new carpet there, and it all matches. And then also, just lastly, keep your friends and family, and your thoughts and prayers from all of our friends over in Florida. They're recovering through Hurricane Ian, and also let's not put our guard down because hurricane could come here, hopefully not, but the season does not end until November 30th, so let's be aware of that. Thanks. All right, at this time, I'd like to execute Texas Open Meetings Act 551.071 for consultation with our attorney. So we're going to go to recess at 6:34. All right, we come out of recess at 18:58. What I'd like to do is I would like to move item five, public comments, down and then bring item six, scheduled visitors, up. And before I do that, just have a couple of statements to make before we get into this. Oh, did I miss those? Oh, sorry. Thank you for keeping up. Staff reports first. Chief Keel.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, citizens. The Clear Lake Shores Police Department, in the month of September, conducted 115 traffic stops, made four arrests for driving while intoxicated, one narcotics offense, seven, I'm sorry, nine suspicious circumstances. We worked six accidents, investigated two assaults, four thefts, made 11 arrests, 11 assist other agencies, conducted one fraud investigation, and completed 69 residential checks and 478 business checks. That's my staff report.
Thank you, Chief Keel. All right, city administrator Brent Spear.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce Jason Ellison as our new building official. This is Jason. He's been on the job. He's completed his first week, and he's still here, so that's good. And we're happy to have him. Just so you know, there will be a social media post going out with some highlights of his career, and I think he's blending in well, and he's learning the nuances of our city. He is a certified building official, also floodplain manager, so he's got a lot of skills and a lot of credentials that will help our city continue to be safe and built well. And we do appreciate Kevin Harrell's tenure here as well, so welcome, Jason. With Safe Built, they're working directly with building and permitting. That is a third-party inspection company, and now that Jason's here, we probably would offload any ground-up commercial development, which would be extremely time-consuming in that event, but we have that planned, and they are working through our ordinances so that they can do an adequate job with inspections to city standards. With Texas Parks and Wildlife Division grant, Shell Bottom Park, I do have a quarterly report to submit tomorrow. Waiting for just a little bit of data, and then the Army Corps of Engineer permit will be approved. So I got that last week from the Corps, that they needed some more data. That's coming from our engineer. As soon as that's incorporated, then that will be approved for sending out for bid documents, and then finally construction. So that's a long, long process. We're about two and a half years in, but hopefully we'll have a very nice product for the public to enjoy at Shell Bottom Park. State Road 146 continues. If you travel that in the morning, please be aware that there's substantial delays coming south from Seabrook. Today, about an hour, hour and 15 minutes, I think, to get through that section, so might find another route if you have timely business down here. The SLRF funding, which is coronavirus, and that's part of the Build Back America plan, we expect the second tranche from US Treasury to probably be placed with the city within the next week to 10 days. That's about $150,000, and that will bring that total to $300,000, which can be utilized for projects, any acceptable government purpose, and further down the agenda. I have something to bring forth. Public Works is working hard right now to put city hall back together, as you witnessed, and we found and we're addressing some safety conditions such as missing switch plates that were behind furniture, could not, didn't know they were there. So we're getting those replaced, and we're trying to eliminate as much waste as we can as we do that cleanup and move around. Blue points completed as far as the paving, and I think the rest of this is pretty, everyone else has talked about, so. Any questions from council?
All right, thank you, Mr. Spear. All right, next is, like I said, we'll move scheduled visitors up, so the following would like to be recognized individually to address concerns regarding current internal state of the police department. It is Corporal Nathan Flores, Officer Jose Vargas, Officer Hannah Mason, Officer Eric Galvan, Officer Madeline Nuzenko, and Officer Nathan Shemansky. And then B will be Donald, David Donaldson, unemployment conditions. Before that, just want to set a few ground rules and talk about a couple of things. When the officers talk, I'd like to hold y'all to three minutes. If you need a little bit more, just, you know, we'll see where that's going, you know, and we want to allow that, and we want to make sure that the public has an opportunity to discuss things, so let's let all the officers talk first. The council may or may not ask questions, and let's all be courteous to each other. Let's have civility and respect each other. We're all humans here, and we also want to make sure that we don't have any personal attacks, all right? And so this is about the police department and functionality, more like form, fit, function, and then things we can talk about are people, projects, and problems, okay? So let's keep that in mind and not attack people or persons while going through this. And again, try to hold to the three minutes, and folks, when you get up and talk publicly, just please state your name and your address if you live in the City of Clear Lake Shores. And then I'm also going to hold a visitor that comes up and talks to discuss one time, if it's during the police officers talking, and then, of course, council can discuss as much as they can. We could also refer any questions we may have off the staff and hopefully get those answered to you outside of this meeting. This is not intended to solve anything here tonight, is to merely allow the police force to come and discuss their concerns with the city council. So, does anybody have any questions about that or concerns? Having none, I'll go ahead and open the meeting up to Mr. Flores. Hopefully, your microphone works better than Brent's.
Testing. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns. Can you hear me now? Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns. My name is Corporal Nathan Flores, and I'm currently a full-time police officer with the Clear Lake Shores Police Department and have been since April 2016. The patrol staff is in attendance today after submitting a lack of confidence letter to the Mayor and City Council on September 22nd, 2022. This letter outlined numerous and persistent problems that have come to exist at the Clear Lake Shores Police Department during the last year while under the leadership of the head of the agency. It appears that after Donaldson vocalized our concerns to the head of the agency, city administrator, and the mayor, his position was ultimately eliminated. Throughout the past year, I have observed the head of the agency to have a progressive overload of favoritism towards an officer and showed a lack of respect for myself and the officers that are in attendance today. The department has been separated by the head of the agency's actions due to his inability to acknowledge unsafe working conditions, inappropriate sexual harassment allegations, and refusal of advice from his command staff. Overall, this meeting is taking place because each of us feels the need to express our fear of continuing employment underneath the current head of the agency. I now would like to briefly illustrate the department's current working environment from previous incidents involving me and the head of the agency. On April 2nd, 2022, I was scheduled to work and report for duty on time. Upon arrival at Clear Lake Shores Police Department, I observed the head of the agency in a department-issued uniform, sitting in a marked patrol unit. A former officer was also in attendance and stood next to the patrol unit that the head of the agency was occupying. I then exited my personal vehicle and walked past their location when the head of the agency exited the patrol unit with an agitated posture and addressed me by stating verbatim, quote, "What the fuck are you doing here?", end quote. This question was not said in a joking manner and was received by me to show his power in front of a subordinate, the former officer. Yes, the head of agency apologized for his actions after I approached him about the incident. He believed the incident was due to a miscommunication and believed that I had submitted a vacation day for that date of incident, when in fact it was for the following week. This incident left me humiliated because I felt for the first time at this agency that I did not have the support from my command staff. On August 30th, 2022, a former officer sent me a message informing me that he had to run to KIMA, to the KIMA Police Department. Due to him not being dispatched to this location and me being his supervisor, I responded and asked if the visit to KIMA was personal or business-related. The former officer refused to answer my question by stating he was picking up some paperwork. I then revisited the incident after he returned and told him because he did not answer my question. "I guess the visit to KIMA was personal," the former officer responded by saying, "nosy, aren't we?" Conversation then continued in person at city hall, where he cornered me in the hallway with a blated stance and hands trembling. I told him I could see that he was upset and asked him to step into Assistant Chief Donaldson's office to prevent an altercation. My question was then answered on why he had gone to KIMA after asking several times. The former officer advised that he had filed a court case against the Galveston County Sheriff's Office, and his counsel asked him to submit an open records request to KIMA PD to receive his application that he submitted prior to employment with Clear Lake Shores. Overall, the former officer was insubordinate during this incident, and before leaving for duty advised me, quote, "He would not be fucked with or micromanaged", end quote.
Let you know you're at four minutes.
Can I continue? I got two sentences.
Okay.
And continued to state, he gave me an answer, it just wasn't the answer that I wanted to hear. To my knowledge, the head of the agency was aware about this incident and dismissed the former officer's actions by affirming he probably should have cooled off. These brief examples showed the lack of support and inability to lead his officers due to his temperament and fixed mindset. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, council. You have any questions? Having none, anybody from the public, any statements? All right. Thank you, Corporal Flores. Next is Officer Jose Vargas.
Good evening. My name is Jose Vargas. I'm a police officer here at the Clear Lake Shores Police Department. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to express our concerns on the internal state of the Clear Lake Shores Police Department. Like I said, I've been here for, since January 2022, with a total of eight years of experience in law enforcement in total. I'd like to share an event with all of you where I experienced the most unprofessional, unethical, and improper disrespect that I have ever received in any employment in the past. On September 1st, 2022, I was ordered by the head of agency to come into his office, where I was welcomed with such inappropriate foul language and aggressive manner, aggressive demeanor. The head of agency yelled at me loud enough where Ex-Assistant Chief Donaldson could hear him from the office. Now, before I continue, I'd like to apologize for the words I'm about to express, which may offend some of you in the attendance. The head of agency yelled, "What the fuck is that bullshit on your head?", amongst other things, using foul language, referring to my hairstyle on this day, which was neatly groomed and not needed to be trimmed. The head of agency then ordered me to unfuck the shit on my head and to not come back until it was done. The head of agency then told me to hold on as I began to walk out of his office and proceeded to capture an image of my hair on his phone. When asked for the reason for the image, he stated, "This is not going to end well for you." Later, I discovered that the head of agency shared the image and/or details with his friend, who is no longer with us, I don't know how to refer to, former officer, who had the audacity to ask what you, when, he asked me, "What do you got underneath your hat?", as soon as I walked into the patrol room the next morning, whenever it was his job to relieve me from duty. There was no other witness to the disrespect that I received from our leader and head of agency other than Ex-Assistant Chief Donaldson. And I believe we're all aware that the former officer and Ex-Assistant Donaldson, Ex-Assistant Chief Donaldson doesn't have any relationship with that other subject. After departing from the head of agency's office, I entered my personal vehicle, where I made a phone call to my wife. I explained to her how I had just been treated by the head of agency and expressed to her that I no longer felt comfortable working for this man. This man humiliated, embarrassed, and crushed my dignity. Due to the behavior of someone who is in place, who is placed in such an honorable role, and as heartbreaking as it was, I walked back into that office and apologized to the head of agency for any disrespect he may have felt given his personal opinion on my hair and placed my police badge and ID on his desk. At this time, Ex-Assistant Donaldson was already inside the head of agency's office, assuming he was brought in while I had just stepped out previously. The only reason why I'm still here in this uniform is because of that man, Donaldson. Donaldson was able to diffuse the situation where I was able to continue to work under the agreed arrangement that I wear a hat for the remainder of the night. If US council members do not understand the type of disrespect that was given to me that evening, please note that prior to the commence of the September 6th patrol meeting, the head of agency felt the need to announce in front of all in attendance, including patrol staff, Donaldson, and Captain Gist, that I deserved an apology for his actions after the meeting regarding the event that happened on September 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any statements from the public? All right, next is Officer Hannah Mason.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Officer Hannah Mason. I've been with Clear Lake Shores Police Department for only a short four months. Before that, I was in several other agencies for approximately a total of eight years experience. While my time at Clear Lake Shores has been short, I've seen several concerning issues within the department. Firstly, there's an extreme lack of communication in the agency and what appears to be no attempt to correct the issue. This is most obvious regarding the current work schedule. The current work schedule is both mentally and physically taxing on all officers, yet despite multiple complaints, nothing until recently has been done. This isn't just a personal opinion or something like that. I've worked this schedule before at my other agency, and it worked well for that agency. However, it does not work here. We only have a few short hours during our work, or after work, to, you know, exercise, make ourselves some meals, and still be able to get enough sleep at the end of shift. This is just one example of a lack of communication and leadership. You've heard my fellow officers and will hear other stories from experiences that they've had with the current leadership. I've worked in several other agencies and experienced different positives and negatives with each. However, I've never seen this many issues with an agency in my nearly nine years in law enforcement experience. The lack of concern and intervention regarding a possible sexual harassment allegation, the lack of action regarding dissent between supervisors and patrol officers, treatment of other officers, and the blatant favoritism is appalling here. All of this leads to extremely low morale and a hostile work environment. The City of Clear Lake Shores has the propensity to be a wonderful workplace, and the citizens do deserve the best police department that, you know, we can provide, but right now, we have neither of these things, unless something is done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah, Mason, sorry. Any questions from council? Any statements from the public? Yes, you do, and not questions, but statements.
My name is Mike Pettit. I live on 818 Cedar. I guess the statement is, without being a question, my statement would be, I'd be interested in knowing more, I guess, about the schedule that was not acceptable and how many hours a week is expected now. Was there hours skewed toward trying to put in the hours total for the week in several days, and then there were several days without work, or, you know, I guess, you know, what did that look like?
If I still have time, I'd love to address that.
Yes, if you want to, and then the chief may want to address it, too.
Okay, absolutely. So the main issue that we're having with the current work schedule, there are several different things. First of all, if you break down the hours per day, so if you have a 24-hour day, you work for 12 hours, you have eight hours to sleep, that leaves you four hours in between to, you know, for me, I need to exercise. It's beneficial to my mental health. You have to be, you know, of physical strength to do law enforcement. You simply don't have time. It takes me 45 minutes, and most officers, 45 minutes to get home. So to and from, that leaves you with about two hours, respectively. You know, you have an hour to slow down, you know, get ready for bed, cook something for tomorrow, and then I need an hour before shift to wake up before I even leave to go to work, so that leaves absolutely no time. The other issues that we're experiencing is a lot of us work extra jobs outside of the agency, and the way that it works is we have two days on, so say we'll start at the beginning of the pay period, so work Monday, Tuesday, 12-hour shifts, you're off Wednesday, Thursday, then you work Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then it switches to the other, to, you know, the opposite the next week. It's nice to have, you know, every other weekend off, however, you have, you know, this changing schedule, you don't have enough time to get your stuff done. That one week where you only work two days is fantastic, but usually you're so tired that you don't have energy to do anything afterwards. And so that's our, that's our main issue. It's not so much a personal opinion. I loved the schedule back at my other agency. It worked well. We had take-home cars. We called off duty at our place of residence, so there's no commute. Here, with traffic, everything around here is just, it takes away too much time. It's not beneficial to the officers.
So I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate more on why it worked? Was it only because of the fact that you had your officer car as your personal car, and there was no commute?
It was...
Or, I mean, what was the difference?
So it was slightly different. It was the same day, you know, day setup, however, we did have a slightly shorter work time, so it was about 11 hours and some change. But it definitely helped a lot, being able to call off duty in your living room or in your driveway. That took out completely any commute, any of that time, because for me personally, it's between 45 minutes to an hour, depending on traffic, to get home, to and from work. So total of two hours.
So it really is more like a 10-hour workday, because you're not really working if you're calling off while you're driving home?
No, we're still, we're still here in the city.
No, but at the other, your other job where it was?
Oh, no, no. My commute time was nothing. I was still in the county, so I was at work for the full, the full shift.
Gotcha.
So I was constantly there.
Okay, thank you.
Can you also elaborate on what other jobs you work at?
For me personally, I don't have, I don't have any extra jobs because I simply don't have time.
Okay.
So for me to be, you know, mentally healthy, I'd be, you know, my weekend's off.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I'd like to point out something else regarding the schedule. I think it would be beneficial for everybody to hear.
So we've already been recognized, right? And...
It's a point that I agree with. I simply forgot to mention, if you would allow. So just quickly, so the fact that we don't have any time, you know, off duty to exercise, cook ourselves healthy meals, it leads to physical issues, too. I know, I've, you know, been struggling with weight, I don't have time to run, I don't have time to cook myself meals after work, and it makes us, you know, physically and mentally tired, which makes it very dangerous to be at work. You know, an exhausted officer might miss something or, you know, have a mental slip-up. You know, if you're well-rested and ready and prepared for shift, you know, that completely changes it. An issue that we've seen is that, yes, stats have dropped, you know, traffic stops, things like that, and simply we're just so tired. We don't have enough, we don't have adequate time to get enough rest.
All right, Mr. Scanlon.
The schedules, I know you work more and less different weeks, but throughout the course of the year, what is the average number of hours you work if you averaged it out over the whole year, per week? Forty, fifty, sixty?
Per week, or?
Per week, on average.
All right, so it's different for each week. So one week, we work two 12-hour shifts, that's 24 hours. The next week is 60 hours, a 60-hour work week.
So in the course of a year, how many total hours do you work?
I'm dyslexic. I would not be able to figure that out. You asked the wrong person, I'm so sorry.
Sure, we can look at the schedule and figure that out.
Yeah, I'd pull out a calculator if you'd allow, but... Say it one more time. 2,184 hours. Thank you.
So you said it's 24 hours one week, 60 hours next week, so it's 84 hours in two weeks.
Correct.
So a normal work week is 40 hours in two weeks, that would be 80 hours, so you're working four hours over that. Do y'all get paid overtime for that extra four hours?
No, sir. And we don't get paid overtime until six hours over.
There's a separate policy for that. For first responders, for the city. All right, one more, Mr. Alex.
So one more question on the weeks that you...
Oh, Mr. Scanlon.
Sorry, my bad.
I haven't been as plugged in as maybe I should have been. Do we have a take-home car policy right now?
No, sir.
Since we purchased all those new cars? No, we don't. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fisher.
Sorry about that, Alex. So on the weeks that you guys work 60 hours, how is that scheduled as far as... scheduled as far as how many days in a row, and then how many hours each day?
So, as far as each day, the longest tour of duty is, uh, three days. But I will say the main concern is the lack of listening to officers' concerns, especially regarding safety.
Any further questions? Public? Looks like we've got one or two. Come on up to the podium, please.
Uh, my name is Chase Langston. Um, I live in Alvin, Texas. I'm just kinda curious with this twelve-hour schedule, like, how many officers does that leave you on shift at one given time?
So, that's not questions for them?
That's regarding the schedule, sir.
Well, that can come from council.
Okay. I didn't know if we were allowed to ask about the schedule.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Uh, I'm Clint Shelton. I live at one three nine Clear Lake Road. I've worked shift work for over thirty-five years. Have a awesome schedule that I love, everybody I work with loves. I think something could be worked out. I mean, you have officers in, all over the country that work, why not, why can't something be worked out here? I think everybody needs to get together and figure, figure their shit out. This is, I mean, really.
Alright, next, Trish? Yes, please.
Hi, uh, my name's Trish Scarborough. I'm at six, uh, fifteen Oak. I had to think about it for a sec. Uh, six fifteen Oak. Um, I'm, I'm not really sure of the protocol here, but I think, uh, my question, I wish I would have, uh, stood up when Officer Flora spoke, um, but I've heard it twice now, something about mentioning of sexual harassment. Um, I'd love to have, here, if possible, some more expansion on that. Um, I don't know if we're talking about within the, uh, just simply within the force, outside of force, I don't know, but that sounds fairly significant to me, and I'd like to know more about it if possible.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next is, uh, any other questions or statements? Yes? Mr. David Donaldson? No? He'd be pleased to be on the microphone.
Mayor, council, the reason this shift is not good for the officers or good for the city, it takes eight officers to work this shift. We have eight officers. So, when one calls in sick, we got one officer working by himself. If somebody takes vacation, we have an officer working by theirself, out here at night on the weekends. If somebody goes to training, we have an officer working by theirself. If somebody has court, we have an officer working by themselves. So, with, it's the number of people that we have to work the streets is the problem for a management standpoint. Um, you know, I don't like the officers working by theirself. Uh, last council, one or two officers on the street, and we tried to accommodate that with a different type of schedule. This schedule doesn't allow that. So, they're out there by theirself, and what's really important to me and should be important to the coun, to y'all and council, is when these officers make a DWI arrest, or any arrest at all, narcotics, whatever it is, that one officer that's working the street is now in Galveston, and there's nobody here in the city. If you call for help, you're not gonna get it. There's no officer here. They might be gone four, five hours. So, as a, as a management point, I can't wrap my head around it. Thank you.
We have, Mr. Donaldson, we have a question for you, please, from council, Ms. LaDai.
So, if you're working twelve-hour shifts, and you have two twelve people on for each shift, that's four. So, why do you need eight? Is my first question. And then secondly, how many, if, if you do eight-hour shifts, don't you need six people a day for an eight-hour shift?
No. We're talking...
So, explain, I, I just wanna understand the difference.
Yes.
I mean, I'm assuming the difference is an eight-hour shift versus a twelve-hour shift, right? Or no?
No. To work, to work this shift, it takes eight, eight people to have people on duty at the time. If one calls in sick, like she says, if two are working and one calls in sick, he's by himself. It takes two people to work this shift, and if one of them's gone for court, it, or in arrest, it leaves one person here, or they're working by theirself. If you look at the budget, these officers have been working by theirself, and there's not gonna be that much overtime shown on the budget, because they're working by theirself, and I'm out here with them. So, if you look at the overtime budget, it's gonna be skewed because they're working by their selves. You, you know, I'd like for y'all to ask the officers how much time I've spent out here working, and how many times they've worked by theirself since we've implemented the schedule.
What's the, what's the alternative schedule, is my question? And why is it better?
For the coverage for the city and for the officers, right? Looking for something that, that gives them a little bit, and something that's best for the city, because that's overall what we're looking for. So, the schedule where you get more manpower and more coverage is two twelves and two eights. And what that does is like on a holiday, I can slip somebody into an eight-hour shift where they're not working a twelve on the holiday, where they can spend time with their family, or whatever it might be. Um, and that leaves swing shifts where if somebody calls in sick, I can just slide them over a little bit where they can cover the busy part, right? That still doesn't give us an officer, two officers around the clock, right? But after four o'clock in the morning, with, with the two twelves and two eights, after four o'clock in the morning, there's an officer by theirself until ten in the morning. And usually, that's the lull of the time, but yes, things can happen, right? But that's how we get more coverage on Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, and, and not leave the officers out here by theirself, and not leave the city unattended while they're in Galveston.
So, who works the eight and who works the twelve? Is it a rotating? I mean, I guess I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around...
Okay, so...
Like, give me a week example.
Yes. Every officer will, a week, will work two twelves and two eights, and then they'll be off three days.
Okay.
Every officer has that. No, they don't, that doesn't give them weekends off. And honestly, we're trying to run a business here. If they don't have weekends off, I can't help that. I'm here for the city, and that, that's what I took an oath to do.
And, you, then, so how many, uh, police officers did you have during this time that twelve-hour shifts were being run?
I've had six and seven.
Question? I got a question for you. So, when you're working these shifts with these guys, you're, are you working your eight-hour shift, or whatever your shift is, and you're staying over to help them?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I don't think they should be out here by theirself, I really don't.
They shouldn't be, especially, you know, during the day, we have other officers here. We have people in other positions that could give them backup, so it would make sense to me that you'd have your lull times during the day, not on the weekends, in the evenings, when the bars are closing down.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Having none, next is Officer Eric Galvan. Uh, Eric Galvan is on the list for next. You wanna yield your time to Mrs. Zanka, then?
No.
Huh?
Sir, I have a problem with her one first.
I, yes, I have a problem with it. You gave me a list here, and I'm following the list. And I'm asking to stick with the list. And I'm, I'm turning that down. I'm the mayor, and I'm running the meeting. I have one more thing, just hold on one second. Stop, please stop. If there's things being handed out, just a reminder just to council that they're not for consideration tonight, except for a future meter, meeting down the road. All we're here is to listen to the items that the police officers have given us in a letter, and we're welcoming them to go ahead and present that information.
Thanks again, members of city council, for granting me this opportunity to express our concerns. My name's Officer Eric Galvan. I'm a sign of the patrol division for the past three years now. As you can imagine, it's very difficult to stand before you today and publicly speak about the deteriorating state within the Clear Lake Shores Police Department. I'll begin by addressing Chief Keel hiring officers with a less desirable disciplinary past, uh, that being Officer Cooley, a former officer who was employed here. While I won't speak on those exact details, we, us officers, were already aware of his past, and knew that he and Chief Keel had been long-life friends. Uh, Chief Keel knew that this person would not be a good fit amongst our ranks, and yet still made the executive decision of hiring him. Every police department has a standard of professionalism, code of conduct, and ethics, meaning an applicant applying to be a public servant police officer must be held to a highest standard in regards to personal character, morals, ethics, and a proven reputable past. All these cases were ignored. The chief's negligence in his decision-making would unfortunately lead to the awful experience which Ms. Officer Zanko will elaborate with his encounter with him. Now, that encounter could have been avoided completely had proper hiring practice protocols were followed. Now, regarding the patrol work schedule, Chief Keel stripped Donaldson from his responsibility, which included who is assigned to either day or night shift, the times our shift begins, and which days each of us would have off. We don't know why Donaldson was stripped of this responsibility, but we all felt the growing tension between Donaldson and Chief Keel. We're now working a sixty-hour shift every other week. We've never worked a shift like this before, and can't understand the need to do so. We all have families with responsibilities and obligations that this shift makes extremely difficult to balance a healthy life. We aren't well-rested, and oftentimes come into work exhausted and tired, which obviously affects the quality of our work. Over time, we reached our breaking point and asked Donaldson to let Chief Keel know that all his patrolmen requested to meet with him to discuss it. During our meeting on September sixth, so as to not talk over each other, my fellow officers chose me to lead the conversation to Chief Keel, addressing our previously stated concerns. When the meeting began, we all observed Chief Keel to display an uninterested, bothered, and even agitated demeanor. When I finally presented our grievances of the current schedule, Chief Keel personally attacked me, saying, "I'm sorry that it's not the schedule that Galvan likes." I had to remind Chief Keel that I wasn't speaking for myself alone, that I was speaking for us all as a whole, at which point each individual officer then spoke and agreed that they did not like the current shift. Chief Keel's only response was saying that the shift assignments were not gonna change, and that was based on what benefits the department, and this would be the last time he would have this conversation. The meeting ended with Chief Keel abruptly standing up and leaving the meeting without a single positive thing to say or words of encouragement. Now, let's fast forward three weeks. Donaldson has been terminated of his position, and now oddly enough, Chief Keel announces that going forward, Captain Gist will not be in charge of the schedule, and will be modified. This was announced the very next day after Donaldson's exit. How did what benefits the department change in three weeks? We aren't blind. We know that Chief Keel was playing keep-away with Donaldson, who now that he isn't around, has relieved himself of that responsibility and passed it down to Captain Gist. Finally, I would like to present to you, which I, in those manila folders, are screenshots of inappropriate text messages Chief Keel sent to Ms. Amy Albro, who you all know as the owner of SoFree Cafe. Okay? You can read those text messages in those manila folders. The conversation covers three different subjects that spanned from the dates of August second to most recently September twenty-first, just a few weeks ago. Ms. Albro seeks, uh, seeks the assistance of Chief Keel in finding a rather rude customer who her employees had an encounter with. The second subject was Ms. Albro asking Chief Keel for assistance with her annual witch ride, and lastly, Ms. Albro informs Chief Keel that she intends to inform her husband that she saw legal counsel for divorce and wanted him to be aware in case things get out of hand. It goes as follows. After being thanked for his assistance in finding the rude customer, Chief Keel responds, "I would," in all caps, "literally do anything for you." Chief Keel writes, "I'm assuming you don't want me to kick his ass." Ms. Albro responds, "If I could, I would," followed by her saying, "Do as you please." Chief Keel responds by adding a half-smile smirk emoji, then saying, "Be careful telling me that." LOL. Chief Keel then writes, "Let me know if I can do anything else to you..." Dot, dot, dot. "I mean for you," followed by another half-smirk emoji. Ms. Albro asks for assistance in her annual witch ride. Chief Keel responds, "For," in all caps, "you, anything, anytime, anywhere, any reason." Chief Keel refers to Ms. Albro as beautiful, writing, "Stay up, beautiful, you got this." After Ms. Albro informs Chief Keel of her intentions to inform her husband of the legal counsel, Chief Keel writes, "I'm sorry you're going through this..."
Your time's up.
"...I want you to know..." I have a little bit more to go. I'm sure they would love to hear it. "I'm sorry you're going through this, and I want you to know..."
So, your time is up. Your time's up. Alright.
"I'm sorry you're going through this, and I want you to know we love you and support you," which, by the way, is a great response, until right after that, he writes, "I love you and support you." And Chief Keel refers to Ms. Amy Albro as baby girl, writing, "You don't have to tell me something, baby girl, I know how that gets." Okay? Chief Keel asks Ms. Albro if she feels safe. She responds that she believes so. Where then Chief Keel writes, "If I have to throw myself on you to protect you, I will," followed by another half-smile emoji smirk. Now, as I stated earlier, in law enforcement, there exist the standards of professionalism. We're held to a higher standard and swear to act with honor and integrity. As chief, it's his responsibility to lead by example and demonstrate these qualities to the utmost highest degree. Sadly, that's not the case here. Regardless of the context, these text messages are highly inappropriate, and not the conduct nor behavior that a police chief should demonstrate. Because of all this, I find it exceedingly difficult to work under Chief Keel's command. I consider him to be a boss rather than a leader. Council, leaving with the phrase that Chief Keel used so frequently, he said, "What's best for the department? Whatever action you all decide, please do what's best for the department and what's best for the city. The citizens deserve that much."
Any questions from council?
Mr. Galvan, I have a question for you. So, we were talking about the schedule. At what point did the schedule change? Were you guys working these twelves and eights before? When did they change?
Never. It changed, uh, soon when I was injured. Right around that time when I was injured. Never we had, we worked it before. Again, we're talking about Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, every other weekend. We don't care what days we get off, right? What we care is resting. So, we're working Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, twelve hours consecutively. So, for that entire weekend, it's extremely stressful. It, we have families, we have to take care of things, and we, we can't get things done. It was never done this way. When the schedule was done under the, how, uh, Assistant Chief Donaldson had it made, two twelves, two eights, perfect, everything was flawless, we were able to take care of our responsibilities.
So, how long have you worked here for us?
I've been here for three years.
Thank you for your service, by the way.
Thank you.
Uh, have you worked that schedule that you're referring to the whole time since you've been here until it changed?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
I do believe you said that, uh, right after, uh, um, Don, David Donaldson departed, that after Officer Gist took over, that the schedule went back to the, uh, twelves and eights? Is that correct?
He made an announcement that Captain Gist would now be in charge of making schedules, and that it would be modified. So, as of right now, we're still working sixty hours every other week.
Okay, so, they said it will be modified. It hasn't been modified yet.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any statements from the public? Yes, sir. Can you use the microphone, please?
My name is Kenneth Williams, retired Galveston County Sheriff's, uh, from the sheriff's office, retired agent. I've known, I've known Chief Keel here for years, right? Chief, he just explained you perfectly. Remember, remember the Newmans? Alice Newman, Wesley Newman, you remember that? You remember running around on his wife? You remember being in AJ's? You remember running around on his wife? You remember being in AJ's meat market? When Wesley showed him what happened?
Excuse me, sir. Stop. It's not personal.
I'm verifying what this officer says. That's exactly what y'all hired as a chief. Good luck.
Any others? Having none, recognize Mrs. Zanko, Officer Zanko.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Madeline Zanko. I've been employed with the Clear Lake Shores Police Department for two years. And I'm assigned to day shift patrol. I'm here today to speak to you all about an incident that involved myself, Officer Brent Cooley, who at the time was a full-time officer, and Sergeant Chet Rich. One afternoon in March 2022, I was inside the patrol room. As standard procedure, I began to log off my MDT before leaving for the day. While logging off, I was slightly bent over the desk to have a better view of my MDT. I then felt the presence of Brent Cooley directly behind me, near my bottom. He leaned over, then whispered into my ear and stated, "Does this make you feel uncomfortable?" I was completely uncomfortable and did not know what to do, and I felt violated. Sergeant Chet Rich was sitting at his desk nearby and observed Cooley's actions. Shortly after Cooley left the patrol room, Sergeant Rich approached me and stated Cooley's actions were highly unprofessional and very inappropriate. Sergeant Rich also stated he felt uneasy about observing the incident. The following day, I requested to speak to Assistant Chief Donaldson about the incident. He expressed a high regard of concern. He documented my statement and stated he would notify the head of the agency and any applicable parties via email. Shortly after my initial complaint was made, I requested a follow-up with Assistant Chief Donaldson. He stated the head of the agency declined to investigate the incident and no further action would be taken. This was not the follow-up I was expecting to receive. I was disappointed and heartbroken that my complaint was then investigated thoroughly. The head of the agency and Brent Cooley have a close friendship, and I thought this was the reason my complaint fell on deaf ears. I then decided it was in my best interest to stay quiet because I feared if I attempted to speak out again, I could risk losing my job within the department, also could be the target of retaliation. I would like to thank all of you for giving me a chance to be heard this evening. I would also like to thank Assistant Chief David Donaldson, Captain Phil Guest, and my fellow officers, who are my police family. Thank you for all this support. I love the city of Clear Lake Shores and the citizens it's worth to protect. Thank you.
Any questions from council? Statements from the public? If it's not a personal attack...
Oh, it's not a personal attack. These are true facts, okay?
No, it's not about facts.
He has known Cooley. He's known Cooley as long as I know, knew him. He knew everything about Cooley. He brought him into your city. I don't know why y'all aren't making him resign. Y'all take the whistleblower, get rid of his stuff, but y'all keep his duty.
Alright, that's enough to know, please.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I've never had a problem with any officer in this city with the exception of Cooley. I got very uncomfortable, minor little stupid thing with him at Home Depot over parking next to a barbecue grill. I just, you know, I reacted a little... Not mean, but got sideways with him. And I went up to him and told him I apologized, but I'd like to retract that apology.
Alright, Mr. Donaldson?
Mayor, Council, I took the information from Officer Zanko. I took the information from Officer Zanko, right? I knew I didn't have a choice because of the friendship that he has with Officer Cooley and the, you know, the things that he's let slide and not documented when he was in violation of policy. So Brent Spear's not a good-to-go-to person. So I took my complaint, Matty's complaint, and I took it to the mayor. So a short time later, the mayor has met with Brent Spear. He's met with Chief Keel. Next thing I know, I'm in the chief's office, and I get suspended for two days for violating the chain of command, which I'm perfectly... I did. I'm perfectly fine with that. So I read the chief's complaint. I respond to it. And I responded to it, but then when he gave me my official write-up, giving me days off, it didn't have anything, anything, why I went to the mayor about Officer Zanko. And I told him, "It concerns me that you left this out of your report." This is why I went to the mayor in the first place. So if it takes me two days, if I get suspended two days for doing what's right for one of my officers, I'll take the two days. But I'm going to tell you, the mayor failed you, the city administrator failed you, and the chief failed you.
Any questions?
Kurt, is that true? Did he come to you with that?
Recall, and the message was... And if it did, I'm sorry. And then I went to TK, and I said, "Handle it per the process."
So do you remember me coming to you, sir?
Huh?
Do you remember me bringing this to your attention?
Yes, I guess.
Has I explained? The mayor failed you.
I don't know if it was put into detail of what you're talking about, so...
Absolutely, because...
That's your word against mine, and it wasn't, so...
No, sir, it's not, because I'll be presenting text messages.
You know, y'all need to stop for a second, okay?
Yeah, hold on a minute. I have text messages asking him, "Did you take this directly to the chief?" And he did.
Yes, I did take it to the chief for him to handle.
So that means he heard my complaint. Do you understand where we're at here? This is wrong. I've lost my job over it. Everything that I do for these guys has been taken from me, and I don't deserve it.
Any further statements?
Sorry, I'll keep this brief. I have to say, these allegations of sexual harassment, let alone what was apparently given by... And first of all, Officer Zanko, thank you. Thank you for your service and your courage. As a citizen, a single woman, not that's all that, but the thought that my police chief could potentially even make such disgusting comments to me, who would I go to complain to? And then if I ever needed help, I'd be scared that my protection would be in jeopardy if I had somebody who was behaving in that manner, and I tried to report it. I'm a little kind of disoriented here trying to come up with what to say, but this is just not acceptable, either within the force. I don't know what's going on within the force. I mean, obviously, what we just heard from Officer Zanko was, you know, pretty disruptive to the force. But as a citizen, and I believe there are many single women, married women, I don't know what the circumstances were there, but we're talking about a citizen here and pretty salacious text messages from our chief of police to a citizen, and that is just not acceptable. Relationships can evolve, whatever, but that's not acceptable.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes.
My name is James Hagan, and I live at 221 Oak Street. And I just wanted to take a minute to say thank you to all these men and women back here that serve us and had the courage to come up here and speak and say what they just had to say. I'm a little frustrated that this would even happen. I haven't been in this community but a few years. We bought our house in 2019. I like it here a lot. I've never had any issues with anybody in here at all that I know of. Been a few hiccups along the way with the building code enforcement, but other than that, it's been okay. Not making light of anything that was just said in here, but I'm extremely disappointed that we have a city government... And I was a Public Works Director for a small town in Rust, Texas, northeast Texas, for several years, and I've worked in city government before. I know you have a city administrator, we have a council, we have a mayor, we have a police department. There's human resources avenues that should have been followed, and it's extremely disturbing to me that people had to get up and stand at this podium and make the statements that they made and read the text messages that were written. People's private conversations, right, wrong, indifferent, whatever, that, to me, should have really been handled differently. And I don't know what the protocol is here, but I seriously would advise that somebody, whoever your city attorney is, somebody who needs to take a close look at how y'all are operating your human resources department because these people... These people, as well as this man here... Because I can't verify anything that was said here tonight as to the factual, exact, every side of the story. I don't know. But to know that they had to come up here and say that to be heard, if they're wrong about this man, that's disgusting. If they're not wrong, that's disgusting. And the person who was brought up in the conversation, who's not even... I don't even think's in here, that's kind of disgusting. And I don't know why there's not somebody that these people can talk to to handle their grievances within the city's human resources department and get heard and never have to get to this point. And I think something really seriously needs to be looked at. Like I said, I don't know who the city attorney is. Somebody needs to be talking to him or firing him, one or the other, because we should have never got to this point. Thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Hi, Ms. Fisher, 515 West Shore. Sorry, I hate public speaking, so I apologize. I just wanted to say I really appreciate our officers. I love the fact that they've been here for so long. It makes me feel comfortable that they know the ins and outs of the city. They know my pattern. They know when I was leaving, when I was working for Channel 13, they knew that I left the house at 3:30. I'd be driving by the front of the neighborhood. There'd be officers sitting there. They'd wave. They'd flash their light at me real quick when I was leaving. It made me feel safe that somebody was watching my back. And I like the fact that we have officers that are here and have been here for a long time, and the ones that are new to the force. That is important for the city to embrace them and let them know that they are important to us, and we need a good police force. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
I want to thank Mr. Keel and the Assistant Chief. They both saved my life. They... I... And this guy here, too. But I was on a self-destructive path a few months ago, and these guys took the time to change my life and get me back on the right path. And I'm embarrassed to say that in public, you know, but it's true. It is what it is. That's what happened. And it's thanks to these guys that I'm standing upright and I'm on this planet today, okay? So I hate to see that everybody's feuding over, I don't know what the problem is and what happened, but I hate to see them feuding over whatever happened. And I think the best solution would be for the city to bring in like a third-party arbitrator to look at whatever this is. I don't want to know what's going on, but just bring in a third-party arbitrator to review everything and figure out what's going on and come up with a solution. Because this city is a better place for having all these guys here. I mean, we're very, very... What's the word I'm looking for? We're very, very blessed to have these kind of people in our presence. And to let all this get out of control, you know, shouldn't happen. So that's my two cents, you know, for what it's worth.
And for the record, can you state your name and address, please?
John Freeman, 922 Cedar.
Thank you. Anybody else? Recognize Officer Nathan Schamansky.
Officer Schamansky wasn't able to attend today due to personal reasons. I have a notarized statement from him, if I could read that.
I'll allow that.
Okay. So this is from Officer Nathan Schamansky. "Good evening. My name is Nathan Schamansky. I've been employed by the city of Clear Lake Shores as a patrol officer for more than four years, with ten years in total experience as an officer. My goal with this statement is to create a positive change within the department and reverse the decline in optimism, confidence, and enthusiasm the department once maintained. I want to thank David Donaldson and Captain Guest for showing good judgment and having a high standard in their hiring selection of officers for the city of Clear Lake Shores. We have a great group of officers that vow to protect and serve with honor. David Donaldson is experienced in selecting qualified police officers that meet his high standards of experience, work ethic, physical fitness, empathy, and eagerness to help others. I believe a return of the previous schedule where officers worked eighty hours at pay period instead of the current eighty-four hours of straight time would greatly enhance the morale, safety, and effectiveness of our department. A hundred percent of the full-time officers want the previous schedule to return as we are more fatigued and less content working more hours and being away from our loved ones. Donaldson cared about our officers and frequently asked every officer what days off they preferred and always asked if we needed anything. Donaldson also invites officers to his home during the holidays to come eat with his family. The recent change to our schedule that was implemented on March 21st, 2022 has negatively affected every officer. Clear Lake Shores police officers have expressed their concerns, Chief Keel, through meetings and through the chain of command, but Chief Keel continually refused to show empathy with the majority of officers to allow David Donaldson to assign our shifts. I was more productive and well-rested working two eights and two twelve-hour shifts a week. I no longer accumulate comp time due to our current schedule, and I see my family less often. Donaldson supports officers' well-being and having more time with family. When the sergeant position became vacant in April, Assistant Chief Donaldson recommended Corporal Flores and myself to be promoted. Chief Keel has invited Corporal Flores and I on several occasions over the past several months into his office assuring us that we will do away with the corporal position and promote Flores and I to sergeant. Chief Keel stated I would begin earning the first level of sergeant pay scale, a $2-an-hour pay increase on my anniversary date, but that wage increase never came. Chief Keel allowed the vacant sergeant position to be unfilled for several months. I don't understand why Chief Keel would say we would be promoted and not follow through with action. A mandatory meeting on September 29th was held when Chief Keel announced Corporal Flores and I would be promoted to sergeant in October. The department needs better communication and structure to operate at a high level. Thank you for your time, Officer Nathan Schamansky."
Alright, thank you. Any questions? Well, I guess he's not here. What's next? Alright, next is Item B, David Donaldson, employment conditions. Uh, no. Uh, you asked for be-on-agenda item. Uh, you asked for a be-on-agenda item. Yeah, we can go to executive session. Alright, recess at 8:05 for executive session. Alright, good evening. Uh, coming out of, uh, executive session, uh, back in the regular session for city council meeting. Uh, we took that as, uh, Item H was the exes- executive session, so coming out of that would be I, and that's gonna be action from an executive session. A governmental body may conduct an executive session to discuss matters dealing with individual officers or employees. Specifically, this exception allows government, governmental bodies to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of public officer/employee, in particular to the police department personnel. We have any actions from the council?
So, we wanna thank everybody for coming out and giving us all the information that we received from both the public and the officers. And, uh, we are going to, uh, schedule a special meeting for next Wednesday and take all those things into consideration.
Well, specifically, it needs to label.
That's what I talked-
Specifically, the chief-
Specifically taken to consideration, Chief Keel's employment as well as Assistant Chief Donaldson.
Alright, so, motion by-
Somebody.
Mr. Cronister, second by Ms. Ladee for having a, a special city council meeting next Wednesday, uh, for discussion of employment for the police chief and assistant police chief. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, and in addition to that, is anybody other, any other comments?
We're going to be doing an investigation into the entire police force, um, to get a better handle of what's going on. That'll, you know, be ongoing, um, immediately, which I don't know when the conclusion of that will be, but, um, that's, that's our plan for now.
Yeah, we, we really appreciate the police force getting up. I know it's really hard for y'all to go through that, and, uh, we take that with, uh, with great seriousness, and, uh, we will be, uh, looking into conducting an internal investigation.
Thank you for your courage.
Alright, going back to, uh, consent agenda, is there any items that council would like pulled from A, B, C, or D? Having none, is there any objections to cons- the, uh, listed consent agenda? Having none, the consent agenda's, um, accepted as listed. Uh, Item 8, new business discussion, possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A, appointment of two members of the waterfront compliance, to the waterfront compliance committee. Positions expire September 30th, 2024, and, uh, all the applicants are in the, in your, um, package. And for waterfront compliance, two positions opens, two applicants received, one from Doug Whitmore Marsh and one from Craig Ramsey.
I'll motion to appoint Craig Ramsey and Doug Whitmarsh to the waterfront compliance committee.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Mr. Cronister. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, the motion passes. Item B, appointment of three members to the Roads and Drainage Committee. Positions expire the same, the 30th of 2024. Uh, what is that? Roads and Drainage? Richard Sari, Tony Peterson, and Alex Scanlon.
I make a motion to appoint Alex Scanlon, Tony Peterson, and Richard Sari to the, uh, Roads and Drainage Committee.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Ladee. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Thank you. Motion passes. Item C, appointment of two positions to the zoning board of adjust- adjustments. It expires September 30th, 2024. That is going to be only two applied, so one's gonna be an alternate and not applicable here, Pamela Zutek and Richard Sari.
Motion to appoint Pamela Zutek and Richard Sari to the zoning board of adjustments.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Mr. Cronister. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes. Item D, appointment of four positions to the planning and zoning commission. They expire September 30th, 2024. And we have Mr. Mike Pons, Patrick Machelski, and Charlotte Jones.
I'll motion to appoint Charlotte Jones, Michael Pons, and Patrick Machelski to the planning and zoning commission board.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Mr. Cronister. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having, did you vote?
I didn't.
You can't abstain.
I know. Well, I mean, I think that we at least need to give discussion to-
We have a call of vote right now. Sorry, unless council wants to... So, four? Alright, calling the vote again. All in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes. Item E, appointment of two positions to Parks and Pool Committee. Same thing expires September 30th, 2024. Uh, looks like we got Diana Cronister.
I make a motion to appoint, uh, Diana Cronister to the Parks and Pool Committee.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Fisher, second by Ms. Ladee. Any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Motion passes unanimously. Item F, appointment of two representatives to Galveston County Health District Animal Control Services. Mr. Spear.
Uh, this is required due to, uh, changing Animal Services from Bayou Animal Services to Galveston County, uh, Animal Control. Um, the, we need one primary representative and one secondary representative to attend, I believe, their quarterly meetings and participate. This partnership will be good because they do, they do have a lot of materials that we can go ahead and send out to the public through our social media, uh, social media platforms, and we're looking forward to that partnership.
Alright, Moni- Monica's wanting to, uh, step up. We have another council member.
Do they have to be on city council, both of them?
No, they, they don't.
No.
We have a lot of, uh, victims in the audience. Volunteers.
I'll motion to appoint Monica Ladee as the primary and Kellen Scanlon as the alternate.
Oh, wow.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by, um, Mr. Fisher for Monica Ladee and, uh, Keller Scanlon. Uh, any discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, motion passes. With baby in tow. Uh, Mr. Fisher. Alright, Item G, discussion of possible action on East and West Parking Lot paving project. Mr. Spear.
Uh, good evening. This is a project that has been looked at by EDC as well as, uh, the city for some time. This is to address the parking lots that we call East and West Parking Lots in Town Center area. Uh, currently, they are a asphalt product, but it's not really asphalt. And I sent this out and did an RFP for concrete construction, so it's reinforced concrete, uh, that would stand up. We've had good, uh, uh, good history with reinforced concrete. The drainage structures are all in place, so it's just a matter of hitting elevations to those drainings, drainage structures that are existing, and there is concrete apron around the edges. The, uh, so I went out and got this RFP. I would like direction from city council, whether we should go ahead and continue with this and move forward as a project. Had five responsive bidders. You have a bid tabulation sheet in your packet. And, uh, the low bid was, uh, GCI Solutions, uh, for both lots, $555,000, $956,000. Uh, the, kinda the thing I can bring is that we are expecting some funding through, um, the COVID and, uh, those COVID funds that could be utilized for projects such as this. And, um, I anticipate having a total of about $300,000 available to direct at a project. So, the, uh, the additional balance would have to be made up elsewhere in the budget, possibly with help from Roads and Drainage and/or city contribution.
There's not gonna be a problem with the tanks?
No.
Wasn't EDC gonna fund this?
And the, at EDC, we've had many of them express, uh, you know, that they, they agree, um, just haven't gotten down to numbers. And so before I go to these other, uh, government units, I wanted to make sure we had direction from city council to that.
I guess I'm not understanding what direction you're looking for.
Do you wanna approve this as a project to move forward? Just make, let me go and talk to Roads and Drainage and EDC.
Bring back the cost if there's a city cost associated with it?
Yeah, I can do that. And if you're in favor of utilizing those funds that are, that are coming from the COVID-
We didn't budget any parking lot paving and roads and drainage over like the next five to 10-year plan.
I understand.
You say there's $300,000 in available COVID funds?
That's what I anticipate, yeah.
That's what you anticipate?
Mm-hmm.
How, uh, how soon would we actually get those funds in our possession?
Currently have 150,000, I think close to 600 that was received in the first tranche or first payment. That was a year ago, and the second tranche is probably going to be deposited within the next three weeks. And as a non-entitlement unit, we're not, uh, Houston, uh, it goes through, uh, this, the State Department of Envir- of Emergency Management, and then it's pushed out through them. So it's not a direct from the US Treasury, although I have to submit reports to the US Treasury.
Yeah, I guess the next step is you just need to go ask EDC for what, what they really wanna do? I thought they discussed that at their last meeting.
Is city council willing to have this as a project? That's what I wanted to make sure. That's the direction.
Sure. Do we, do you need a motion or just a general, like, yes?
Yes. Just to move forward, please.
Okay, I'll motion to pursue this project and to, at least, uh, at least to the stage where we have funding or possible funding methods for it.
I second.
Alright, motion by Mr. Scanlon, second by Ms. Ladee. Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed, nay? Having none, the motion passes. Again, appreciate everybody coming out today, and we will adjourn this meeting at 11 o'clock.